Not make noise during the meeting. I'm doing the same to mine right now. Chief, can you turn there? We're gonna know about every call. All right. Ready, ready? Glendale Common Council is now in session. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
Alderwoman Vukovich. Alderman Doherty.
Here.
Alderman Gelhern.
Here.
Alderman Bailey. Alderman Smelsing.
Here.
Alderwoman Shaw.
I do believe that Alderman Bailey and Alderwoman Vukovich are both on vacations. They would be excused.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Public comment. Glendale residents, business owners, and property owners are invited to speak to the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda, but are within the city's ability to regulate or control. Is there anyone wishing to speak to a non-agenda item? Okay, do you want to come up to the microphone? You both be seated, but when you speak, make sure that whoever is speaking talks directly into the microphone. Put it in front of you. If you turn it off to the side like this, it stops picking up. So, and then the folks on the Zoom can't hear you, or the recording doesn't get your comments. So if you could please state your name and address when each of you begin speaking.
We are Bethany Bailey.
And Aspen Varink.
Homeowners in Glendale residing on North Daphne Road. Thank you for the safety you provide within our community, the changes you have brought through your leadership, and your openness to hear the concerns and ideas from neighbors within Glendale. We'd like to share a few questions, thoughts, and ideas with you tonight. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay. As far as speed.
Oh, if you could actually state your address.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I'm at sixty-six sixty North Elm Tree Road on the corner of Elm Tree and Daphne.
Okay.
I'm at five-three-five West Daphne.
Thank you.
So as far as speed within our neighborhood, can there be a radar detector for speed along Daphne? Since it has been changed to a fifteen mile an hour speed zone, school speed zone, drivers should be alerted when they are going forty to fifty miles per hour. While vehicles still will vehicles still be allowed to park along the west side of Gene Nicolay Road near the sports fields and tennis courts? After construction, will Gene Nicolay Road include a waiting lane or parking lane for those families that block off the lane of the road for parent pickup, drop off, and?
We've really kind of seen the brunt of the construction that's going on with the highway along Gene Nicolay Road and as well as with the high school construction. Our quiet little road of Daphne Road, I mean, I think the most traffic we would see would be on homecoming night one time of the year, and now it is almost probably one of, besides Silver Spring and Port Washington Road, one of the bustling roads within Glendale at the moment with school traffic, pedestrian traffic, recreation programs, and also neighbors that commute through our neighborhood, and families detouring through our neighborhood due to the construction. We do, we would like to, and I am also the Clovernook president as well, so many of these concerns or ideas have been brought forth by many neighbors in our neighborhood, not just Bethany and I. We would like to request that any future detours that are being made during kind of the next phase of construction through Gene Nicolay Road really point pedestrian or vehicle traffic to busier roads than through our neighborhood. So I know that it was made a point to during this last phase, not to use Clovernook as a detour point, and we really appreciated that. So we wanted to just put that on your radar to request that that does not get, that our roads are not used when Gene Nicolay is shut down again for the next section and then the third final section in the three phases that it's in. Living on Daphne, well, I know Daphne Road is a point of discussion later on, but the parking signs along Daphne Road at the moment, they restrict parking for school events and just it says school time and athletic events, but there is no parking between the hours of seven-thirty and four-thirty PM. We're wondering if there could be possibly a rewording of those signs to possibly include summer traffic? Or possibly just reword for residential use, but we're open to working, you know, and communicating and discussing that. But, and obviously this may all just be due to the recreation side of Nicolay being shut down at the moment due to construction. But we are wondering if maybe there could be some kind of rewording to ensure that there is parking for residents that live along Daphne? Or also to consider the summertime as well, because it is very vague at the moment that I think people parking along Daphne on either side aren't sure if that's during the school year, is it during any type of school event? Is it only during athletic events? Is it during the summer? So we just kind of would propose that maybe the rewording or rethinking of, you know, how does that look? So it's very clear and to the point when people are parking on the road. And along, not along Daphne Road, but along Elm Tree Road and through the rest of the Clovernook neighborhood, there are signs that do state one hour parking in the entire subdivision. And we are wondering if that also, does that include Daphne Road? So as we move forward to consider north-south side of Daphne Road, does the Clovernook neighborhood also take into account Daphne Road? Because as soon as you turn from Daphne Road onto Elm Tree Road, there are signs that say one hour parking the entire subdivision, which is also very vague.
Then would it make sense to add a crosswalk at the intersection of North Elm Tree and Daphne Road to help provide a safer crossing path for pedestrians and students? We've witnessed our neighbors, kids with child disabilities, as well walking at home, but they've almost been hit by cars that are just flying through there.
And also just experiencing on the way in tonight, there were probably while I was waiting for Bethany, I was, we were carpooling together today. But as I was waiting for her, watching the intersection, there were multiple cars within a five-minute timeframe that just completely pulled a U-turn in the middle of the intersection, which there were cars coming in all different directions. There are students walking using that sidewalk to go into Nicolay. It's a matter of time before there is an accident and somebody is hurt.
That's all we have for new comments. We will be back again for Daphne Road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can tell you that the one-hour parking throughout your neighborhood is posted intentionally so that students don't avoid getting a parking pass at the school and instead choose to park on the residential streets all day long to go to school. We want them, we want the students to park at the school, to get up, to register their cars with, you know, the, the, the office at the school and to get a parking pass from the school. We don't want them parking on the side streets in the, in the neighborhood. So that's why those signs are there. In terms of the other ones, I, I got your comments sent to me earlier by Alderman Gelhard. We'll make sure to get those shared with staff and staff can work with you on, on some of those signage issues, some of the things you've raised.
So just another kind of site comment too is like, who is in charge of monitoring the signage that will be posted on any of the streets? So that's just one of the wonderings that we had is, you know, how will it be patrolled? Will it be neighbors that need to call in and report that? Will the police patrol it? Like, will there be tickets given out? So that's just something that we also were wondering as a neighborhood as well.
The, the police do patrol throughout the entire city. You do see them come down your street from time to time. But we have forty-some officers for this huge city, and so there, they get to, some streets get a lot more attention. You know, you see them a lot more on Port Washington Road or Good Hope, you know, the major thoroughfares, but they do drive through neighborhoods. But really, a lot of our ordinances are complaint-based. And so if someone's parked for six hours in front of your house and it's not related to you or your neighbors, you've never seen the car before, that's a call into the, to the police. And whoever's, you know, on, whoever's on duty assigning dispatch will send somebody out to, to ticket or, or basically talk to you, knock on your door and find out and get more information from you. So, yeah, but typically they're complaint-based. Same as if somebody doesn't mow their lawn. We don't have lawn police that are out looking to see whose lawns are eight inches tall. It's, it's neighbors that complain and then we, the city sends them a letter and, and we follow up, so.
There was a car parked the wrong direction on Elm Tree Road, facing the opposite direction in a no parking side of the street. It was called in the police to come out the car. We're not sure if it got ticketed or not, but it was there for longer than an hour, which proposed, it's presents a safety issue of all of these vehicles trying to get through, neighbors trying to get home. So I guess that was an example today of not really a lot of follow-through and that car remained there and facing the wrong direction on the wrong side of the road. So we're just hoping that maybe there can be some more awareness and patrolling of that area, especially as school begins to start with all of the students parking, using the roads for athletic purpose, you know, parking, there's a lot of traffic. And so we're just looking for some, some extra eyes to help keep everyone safe. We appreciate it.
Let me go here.
So you probably noticed that the new speed limit sign on West Daphne as you come down the hill there. So the city changed that and later on in today's meeting, we're going to take up the issue of no parking on the south side of Daphne, which is something I'm proposing. Because when there's cars parked on both sides, only one vehicle can get through and obviously that poses some real problems in an emergency situation. So I'm hoping that, and the other thing, this was just discussed before tonight's meeting. At the start of school, all of the entrances for Nicolay will be open. So I think that will help. Right now, I think it's just the, the entrance on Daphne that's being used. So I think in a couple of weeks, things will drastically change in terms of the amount of traffic that you see on Daphne.
We're hoping.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll call you back up when we get to the agenda items too. Anyone else wishing to speak in public participation? Mr. Hess? The same advice I gave to the others, make sure you pull the microphone right in front of you and speak directly into the microphone. Otherwise, the recording will not pick you up. So when the clerk goes to do the minutes later, she's like, who was that guy with the beard? I couldn't tell anything he said.
Doesn't important, right? Okay, a couple of things I want to talk.
So you could start with your name and address, please.
Okay, my name is Daniel Hess. My address is twenty-fifty-five West Green Tree. Two things I wanted to talk about. One is in Glendale, there's two entrances in the city that don't have Glendale signs on them. The one is if you're coming south from south to down to Glendale, there's no Glendale sign when you're coming from Fox Point into Glendale.
On Port Washington Road?
Yes.
Okay.
Nothing there. Same thing, Green Tree. And when you go from Glendale, excuse me, from Green Tree, and then you, you're going through River Hills, and then you cross the river, there's nothing there that tells you you're in Glendale. So at some point, maybe there's answer for putting signs there or not. You know, it's not going to be that expensive, but it's still, it's so expensive. I mean, all the other egress into the city all have a, a sign. So that way people know that they're in Glendale. Okay, the other thing I want to talk about is I'll start with Whitefish Bay. They put in last year and this year, two signs with you know, with, with stop signs on them on purpose on the second street. And that was Bay Ridge and their one, one sign, excuse me, they're on the one side of the Lydell. Lydell is you know, one street west of the street there, and then the next one over is by Ridge. And last year they put two signs there and this year they put two signs in there. Stop signs both ways to accommodate all the speeders on their hill, on their road. So they've been pretty, pretty aggressive about doing that. And you know, I mean, with the way all the roads, road crush and road construction and stuff, it's whatever it is. But anyway, in the nineteen eighties, Green Tree and River Road had a stop sign put on there for, for way, and that was at the late eighties, because I had just got here. They put a new sign in there. I never knew it was there and I got stopped. The first second day it was put up. So anyway, in the twenty years ago, on Green Tree and Westwood, I mean, excuse me, Greenwood, Jerry and Judy Hahn requested for a stop sign on Green Tree, which is that Green Tree and Crestwood, and that's been in there for over twenty years. On, on Brantwood, which was going West Bay, way, going west way, there's a, a way with Brantwood and Willow, Willow Tree. And what they did is they, you know, they put some stop signs going there so that things are there slowing down. And now also, five years ago, they did the Acacia and Crestwood. Well, I'd like to see something happen at Green Tree and Acacia. I mean, I mean, we've got four synagogues, four, excuse me, four synagogues coming through Green Tree and Acacia. And Fridays and Saturdays, I mean, that's just a lot of walking there and stuff like that. So I guess I'd like to ask, I know you okayed a stop sign last month, two weeks or two meetings back to get something in. Well, that was in by Nicolay. But there's just way too many things happening. You know, but there, a green tree and, and acacia and so, and so if we can get something done there, I'd see that because there's way too many walkers and stuff like that. Whatever you can do with that. And I think that's all I want to provide at this point. But yeah, somebody's going to get hurt at that intersection with Acacia or with Green Tree there. And when Jerry, yes.
Just to clarify, are you requesting a stop sign at Crestwood and Acacia or, because Green Tree and Acacia intersect?
I meant Green Tree and I'm sorry.
Trying to find this. I meant, yeah, I meant this west is Glen Shore. And then and then there's Crestwood, but Crestwood has one at one of the intersections.
I think you may have bumped the mute button on your microphone. Is there a red light on there somewhere? Okay, tap it and then talk again.
Can you hear now?
Perfect. Thank you. Yep.
I apologize.
So are you talking on Green Tree? So the, when you come from west from Green Bay, the first road is Neil Place to the north and then Glen Shore to the south.
Actually, it's Glen Shore to the north. There's Atwall is right there.
Atwall.
A lot of stop signs at Atwall and Green Bay and Green Tree.
Okay.
Because you, you, as I said, there's four synagogues. There are a lot of people walking Friday evening and, and Saturday. It's amazing. Nobody's ever been hurt. And I just hope it never happens.
Well, Alderman Smelsing and I have both had conversations with Rabbi Schmatkin, Rabbi Darren, Rabbi Kalmer. We've confronted a number of the rabbis. And they are, there are concerns from the synagogues about, about pedestrian safety in the, in the neighborhood. So we are working on some plans right now of ways to make the pedestrian access safer without the installation of sidewalks. So those are, but sidewalk or a stop sign at that intersection, Alderman Smelsing, do you want to work with the city on that?
I, I do personally and also from prior discussions with staff when this was raised earlier. We established that it's not in the best interest to put a stop sign there because it would be a a T-intersection. And in that situation, what you have is you have people who learn to run those stop signs and then that creates a higher risk in other locations. I have similar complaints from all the neighbors up the road on Crestwood and Green Tree where that T-intersection stop sign is, where they are saying people do not stop and it's actually more risky. So from traffic calming perspective, there, from the experts that I've talked to and city staff, there are other things that we should be doing instead of installing stop signs in every intersection. So right now, you know, we can talk more about it, but that's where this topic stood last time we investigated it. Right now, for traffic calming, we're actually exploring doing, actually it's on the agenda later, striping of the road to make the road look narrower. I actually would like to see sidewalk for pedestrian safety further up the road. So that's something that would be a capital budget item. And we did install a speed sign right on that corner as well, actually a little bit up the road to indicate the speed that people are going down that hill to also try to traffic calm. So I think we've, we've done a lot of things to try to mitigate. And I think a stop sign might not be in the best interest of the city.
Oh, that's too bad that safety is not taken a priority, Alderman. Okay. That's, that's, that's a damn shame. You know, there's a lady at six-thirty in the morning with a yellow Cherokee Jeep that's sixty-five in front of my house. I know you're not up, but she does it every morning at six-thirty. I've never seen her ever stopped. You know?
Oh, Chief, you want to put a unit over there in the mornings for a little yellow Jeep?
What day and what time?
Pretty, yeah. Or, I mean, a yellow Jeep.
We had some speeding issues through Crestwood. Chief put a unit there one morning, stopped a couple of people. Boy, that speeding stopped. So that's really what it comes down to. Someone like that who's doing this on a regular basis, it hasn't been stopped. If the chief can, you know, have somebody assigned and they're there for a couple of mornings for just a few minutes, they happen to catch a person come by, they get a ticket, then they, it, it helps to bring down some of the speeds. We also had some stop sign runners in my neighborhood, and I know Alderwoman Vukovich, who's not here tonight, has had some stop sign runners in her neighborhood too. And we, we post a unit there. They, they ticket a number of people and the awareness goes up pretty quickly. But we are working on the pedestrian safety issues and we certainly are grateful for your comments tonight and certainly also the, the comments about the, the welcome to Glendale signs being at some of our entrances to the cities. I think that's important. Especially where we, we have so many neighbors, we border Milwaukee, Brown Deer, Fox Point, Whitefish Bay, Shorewood. So having all those signs do indicate, you know, that you're in a different municipality. So we really appreciate those comments.
Well, on Brantwood, ten years ago, they turned around and put a stop sign there. And here where I'm asking, you know, ten years later, so I mean, the, the council approved that. And that was ten years ago. And then there was another group of signs put up for Crestwood and Acacia. And that was five years ago. But you've got a lot of traffic on Green Tree Road.
We, we do, and, and that's part of our, our discussions right now with staff is how do we bring down those speeds? We appreciate your comments and you have some great ideas there and staff have taken notes on those, so we'll make sure that we, we get to work on those. But thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak in public participation to a non-agenda item? All right, I do see somebody who's joined us on the Zoom. If you wanted to speak in public participation, you can unmute and state your name and address. He's shaking his head no. All right. We will then move on with our agenda. Two items on the consent agenda are the adoption of the minutes of our last meeting and accounts payable. Can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please?
I moved second.
Move Alderman Smelsing, second about Alderman Doherty. Without objection, we'll consider the consent.
Before, oh, I do have a question on the minutes, even though I know I wasn't here. For the minutes on item number six, there's a phrase in there. This is about the authorization to proceed with special events at Richard E. Menelowski Community Park. There's a phrase in there. It's in the last third. The sentence starts as a, as a result, comma, it was my opinion, comma, confirmed by the city attorney. Because Megan signed the minutes, is this Megan's opinion?
That would have been the city administrator, so maybe we should have that. Does it indicate the city administrator is speaking to that item?
Yes, but again, it says.
There's no quotation marks around his comments.
But again, it says in my opinion, so I'd rather have it say in the opinion of the city administrator.
Okay.
Because it gives clarification for down the road.
Okay, we can make that change.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments, questions? All right, we will consider the consent agenda adopted without objection, hearing no objection. We will move on. First item tonight is a public hearing vacating an unimproved portion of the West Fairfield Court public right-of-way to the Union Pacific Railway due to the Department of Transportation's I-43 highway widening. So this was an item that has already been to the plan commission and has now been referred back to the common council. We've scheduled a public hearing. And so this would be, there's a small little sliver of land with the readjustment of Fairfield slightly to the north in order to accommodate the new railroad trestle. And so we would be giving over to Union Pacific a little sliver. I don't remember what it amounted to, a few feet, wasn't it?
It's ten thousand square foot, feet or point two-three-seven acres.
Okay. I think it was like, what was it? The width of it was like eight or ten feet or something, wasn't it?
Yeah, something like that.
Okay. All right, so the members of the council have any questions before I open the public hearing? Alderman Smelsing?
I'm just curious, was there any attempt to get compensation for this from the railway?
So Attorney Barrett can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we are prohibited from obtaining compensation for property that's considered right-of-way.
Right, that's right. If we abandon it, what happens under the statute is it reverts back to the previous or the adjoining landowner. So it's just reserved as a right-of-way. At some point, they probably thought that there might have been a wide, you know, highway or some other road that was going to go in there and the, the right-of-way wasn't as wide or what went in there didn't need to be as wide as they originally envisioned it. And with the reconfiguration of I-43, the railway, the railroad is going to, if I, if I, if, I think John Fellis, if you can help me with this, I think it's going to re, it's going to move over a little bit, right? Is basically what's going to happen. So.
Everything shifts slightly to the.
Yeah, it's going to shift slightly to the north. So they're actually going to be moving their the, the, the track a little bit, as I understand it. And then what this does is this just makes it their problem, not the city's problem in terms of maintaining it, mowing it, keeping it up, handling, handling any issues related to the embankment there and snow, ice, whatever might be, might accumulate there. It's no longer our problem. It becomes the it'll revert back to the, to the, the railroad. So do I have that right, John?
Yeah, that's pretty close to it. Essentially, the concern is the embankment of the, the railroad company considers the embankment that the railroad track sitting on as a structure. So this embankment would actually be in the public right-of-way. So if the bottom of the embankment were to in the future become damaged, erode away, they could theoretically come back to say, well, it's in your, on your property, you guys need to fix it rather than on there. So the idea is to get that structure completely on their property. They're responsible for the maintenance of it and in the long run, it keeps the city kind of free and clear from that issue.
Yeah, I was just more asking from the, you know, we were paying so much for all the other work that we're doing with the railway shift and everything else for forty-three and Port Road. If there was any way we could get compensation for that land that we'd be abandoning and selling instead. But if we can't do it for state law, then we can't.
Yeah, and you could probably argue that something probably the DOT should have engineers, when they were redesigning everything and realizing it was going to go in our right-of-way, should have brought it to our attention. So it probably could, should have been handled a little sooner in the past.
Beyond it fee simple, then we definitely could work with them, but it's just because it's just a it's basically a it's almost like an easement, but it's an accident. We, we have it's, it's reserved for the public, if you will. So it's a, it's a right-of-way. It's a specific legal entity or, or a thing. So when we abandon it, and if it's no longer needed, then it, it, under the law, just reverts to the adjoining property owner.
Thank you.
Any other questions from members of the council? All right, so I'm now going to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on the city's motion to vacate an unimproved portion of the West Fairfield Court public right-of-way to the Union Pacific Railroad due to the Wisconsin Department of Transportation's I-43 highway widening? Is there anyone wishing to speak in the public hearing? There's anyone on Zoom that wishes to speak? You can unmute and state your name and address. All right, second call, anyone wishing to speak in the public hearing? Third and final call, anyone wishing to address the mayor and council on the motion to vacate an unimproved portion of West Fairfield Court during this public hearing? All right, public hearing haven't been uh, properly noticed to the public. Uh, no one did appear tonight to speak during this public hearing, so I would entertain a motion now to close the public hearing. Moved. Moved by Alderwoman Shaw, second by Alderman Dougherty. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
O's no. Motion carries, the public hearing is closed. So we have before us now consideration of a recommendation from the plan commission that the common council vacate the unimproved portion of West Fairfield Court Public Right-of-Way to the Union Pacific Railway uh, due to the railroad trestle reconstruction and the highway widening. Can I get a motion now for us to adopt uh, the recommendation from the plan commission?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Gellhart, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Dougherty, any further discussion? Alderman Gellhart?
Just a side note, every time it rains and it hasn't rained all that much, but it did rain today. Gravel washes down from that area where the train trestle is and, and then I get complaints about that. So maybe this will help avoid that. I don't, I don't know.
I think every construction, I think every construction worker watches the rain going, no, please don't rain. Cause I mean, I saw the next door posted today, tons of, of posts about puddles and mud and everything on Port Washington Road because of the construction. So I think anywhere there's construction right now, a heavy rain does that, so. All right, any other comments? All right, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
O's no. Motion carries. That property is no longer our responsibility. All right, move on now to our new business. First item tonight, item five A, it's consideration of a recommendation from the Planning and Architecture Review Commission to direct staff to schedule a public hearing for a map amendment. This is for Phoenix JCR Glendale Industrial Investors, the owners of fifty fifty-five North Lydell Avenue. They have uh, come to the uh, council with a request to rezone from a B one A one to a PD Plan Development District. Uh, it was sent to the Planning and Architecture Review Commission. They held a public hearing and the recommendation is now back to us. Our next step at this point is simply to uh, direct staff to schedule a public hearing for next month. Can I get a motion, please?
I'm moved.
Second.
About Alderman Shaw, second by Alderman Dougherty. All those in favor of directing staff to schedule a public hearing on a rezoning of fifty fifty-five North Lydell Avenue, please say aye.
Aye.
O's no. Motion carries. Next item is another consideration of a recommendation from the Planning and Architecture Review Commission to direct staff to schedule a public hearing for a zoning map amendment for nine oh two West Yula Court. It is currently an R seven residence district and the request is to make it an R seven A, which is essentially from single family home to allowing for a duplex or for two residences to be on the property. Um, and once again, this went to the plan commission, already held the public hearing there and it's now back to the common council. Can we get a motion to direct staff to schedule that public hearing, please?
I'm moved.
Thank you, Alderwoman Shaw, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Gellhart, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
O's no. Motion carries. Next, item five C, an agreement governing landscaping improvements and vegetation management at Nicolay Union High School in the right of way. I will turn it over to Mr. Warwick.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Kennedy. He had before the city council tonight is an agreement for Nicolay High School to plant uh, some tree shrubs and other plantings uh, around the soccer field. Uh, adjacent to Nicolay High School and the new soccer field that's uh, going in near Elm Tree. Uh, the agreement governing that Nicolay High School will install and maintain those is uh, included for your review and consideration. Uh, if you have any questions, Attorney Barr is here to answer them or John Fellows.
Questions? All right, can we get a motion to approve the agreement, please?
So moved.
Second. By Alderman Gellhart, second by Alderwoman Shaw, any discussion? Alderman Gellhart?
Just a thanks to Dr. Kupara on this one. This has been in the pipeline for a long time and I know it's something that the residents along Daphne have wanted uh, to have some type of barrier uh, to sort of uh, separate them from uh, the activities that are be going on at the new soccer field. So I think this is a great idea.
Thank you, any further discussion?
Let's hope it stops the soccer balls, too.
If the shrubs are big enough, right? Trees are big enough. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the agreement with Nicolay High School, say aye.
Aye.
O's no. Motion carries. Uh, next is authorization to execute an agreement for pavement marking on Range Line Road, Green Tree and Sunny Point. I did have one person who wanted to speak, I believe about, I don't know which one of them, Mark, which one did? Did you want to speak? Okay, all right. All right, I'll turn it over to Mr. Warwick.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Kennedy. So at the last city council meeting, staff was directed to obtain some quotes for um, doing some pavement marking, sheros and um, sharing the road, um, striping on Green Tree, Range Line Road, and then also on Sunny Point. So before the city council is consideration to adopt an agreement. Uh, within that agreement, um, Century Fence was the low provider for a total cost of fifty-two thousand six hundred. Um, based on staff's evaluation of the, the area, we recommend um, the pavement marking on Green Tree, Range Line Road not to exceed forty-one thousand six seventy-five. Um, due to the narrowness of Sunny Point, it lowers down to twenty-two feet at some point, particularly by the bridge. So that would at five feet on each side give about a twelve-foot driving width. Um, if uh, city council would like to do something with Sunny Point, we'd recommend certain signage in the area to indicate that the road is shared.
I'd recommend we end up staying with it, not the striping. We go with what we looked at for last, last minute, we talked about having no parking in that stretch on the curve. And it affects about three houses directly, two other houses on their side, side yard. I think that makes the most sense. At this point, we could look at striping down the road, but I wouldn't recommend we do that now.
I thank you, yeah, the striping on here is some of the traffic calming measures that were brought up earlier, particularly on the north and south side of Green Tree. And then on Range Line from Mill Road to Green Tree as well.
All right, further discussion, questions? Alderman Schmelzling, go ahead.
I'm a penny pincher, as you know. So one of the questions that I saw in the, in the two proposals is that the sheros were three twenty-five each and the quote that we got from Century that we're planning on going with if this moves ahead. Um, but two twenty-five and the higher one, but then of course they were charging more for the, the marking of the, the striping of the roads. Do, do we feel that we could save money in the long run by doing this with like some kind of um, grant for you know, bike trails or anything like that? Or do we think that it's just best to do it all at the same time?
Uh, I mean, that would come down to, you know, a policy question. I don't think we're gonna save any money by putting this together or something. It's striping, this is a significant enough project, at least in my opinion, that you're gonna get the lowest cost by doing what you're doing. We understand that the sheros are more expensive, but the striping is cheaper for Century Fence. So it's the overall project of the cheapness that you're getting by, by going with Century Fence.
And also, I also noted there's um, refresh of the center line. Um, based on some correspondence, it's, it's not something we can do ourselves.
Uh, we don't have the equipment or the capability. I believe it's epoxy, not thermo that we're putting down and we don't have the machinery to put down epoxy in the streets. We, we do striping in parking lots with, with the paint, uh, but anything above that, we don't have the equipment to do.
I know that the sheros we can't do easily because we don't have the painting equipment for that either and the, and the lane line markers similar because they haven't been striped before. So it definitely is needing a professional to come in. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm all in favor of doing the, the Green Tree and Range Line work. I think this'll help with what we just heard today from um, one of my constituents about traffic calming on Green Tree. I also think it will create that dedicated walking area for um, some of my constituents that are out and about on Friday and Saturdays in particular. The sheros, I, I think it'll add consistency to what we've done before on green, I'm sorry, on Range Line, south of Green Tree. And then it'll bring us that much closer to our bike and pedestrian plan by having at least the bike routes marked. And I know we do have a lot of bike traffic as well on Green Tree, which I do see driving by all the time, um, when I'm outside. So, um, and on that similar note, uh, Sunny Point, it didn't look like it would be addressing some of the real concerns because you'd essentially have no walking area if you striped it. So I think I would make a motion to move ahead, if I would. I'll make a motion to move ahead with the contract with Century Fence for Green Tree and Range Line work. Uh, not to exceed the amount you mentioned, um, forty-one six seventy-five.
All right, so motion by Alderman Schmelzling, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Alderman Dougherty. Any further discussion by members of the council? All right, call for a vote, all those in favor of um, authorizing the agreement with Century Fence for forty-one six seventy-five for the striping on West Green Tree and North Range Line, please say aye.
Aye.
O's no. Motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is consideration on the uses of ARPA funds. And I have a number of people that want to speak. Um, I think I'm gonna ask the city administrator to speak first about some of the suggestions and then I'm gonna call on the public before we engage in any further discussion, I'll call on the public folks to speak. So I've got four people down that wanted to speak to this. So go ahead, Mr. Warwick.
Well, thank you, Mayor Kennedy. I'll just highlight a little bit that we're here at a very high level approach of projects that haven't been vetted anywhere. Just trying to throw out ideas and suggestions for enhancements to the community with the remaining one point five million dollars in ARPA funds. I know there's some concerns regarding, um, you know, access to the mountain biking and, and things like that. Those are things that, you know, would be handled in a public meeting or public forum if the city council elects to move that forward as an option. Um, essentially, the city has about one point five million dollars in, in allocated ARPA funds that was granted to us um, as a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic and has to be spent on very specific items. And those are listed here in the memo. Um, so staff is looking for further direction from the city council on how to proceed, where to do more research. Um, any projects to eliminate from this list so we can move towards a decision. A final allocation decision is required by December of twenty twenty-four. Uh, staff was hoping to get, you know, uh, more formal allocation, hopefully by the end of this calendar year, and then the funds have to be completely exhausted by December of twenty twenty-six. So we're just looking for general direction on these very high level projects. Again, these are just concepts for two of the parks of what could be spent for one and a half million dollars. Locations are obviously negotiable or the types of things to be there. It's simply a high level concept and layout of what we were proposing.
All right, thank you. So I have heard now from, uh, I've, between the, myself as well as the members of the council that have forwarded names to me. I have four people to call on from the public. First is Mark Kostick. So the same directions on the microphone, speak directly into it and start with your name and address, please.
Am I, am I on, okay?
Yep.
All right, thanks for having us. This is a pretty exciting time. So my name's Dr. Mark Kostick, I live at seven four seven West Monrovia Avenue in Glendale. I'm a companion here with my son Ian, who's an eighth grader at Glen Hills. And um, he's, we are supported by many members of our North Shore National Interscholastic Cycling Association or NICA, North Shore Teams, the student athletes, coaches and parents all coming here to show their support for this granted high level discussion. And uh, we wanted to kind of come and just make our, make these thoughts known to you. Cause I know there's a lot starting to go on behind the scenes. And so thank you, Mayor Kennedy, and thank you also to our wonderful Alderwoman Tamika Vukovich, who uh, you know, got, responded to me immediately Friday despite her being on vacation. So I really appreciate that. So being, I'm also a veteran, you know, and I've seen a lot of instances where federal funds are wasted, tragically wasted. And this ain't one of those opportunities, or this does not have to be one of those times. What a great opportunity this money is. So let me tell you about why we are here. NICA's mission is to build strong minds, strong bodies, character and communities through cycling. NICA's values are fun, inclusivity, equity, respect and community. These values are on display every time these kids and coaches gather to ride and train. The sport of mountain biking has expanded exponentially in the past decade. Milwaukee's North Shore now boasts six NICA teams. Nicolay, Milwaukee North Shore, Whitefish Bay, USM, Shorewood and Milwaukee Metro. That's over two hundred student athletes and over sixty coaches. Statewide, there are now over eighteen hundred athletes participating in NICA and these numbers are only gonna grow. However, despite this tremendous interest in this expanding sport, our athletes must drive or be driven to trails and bike parks in Waukesha, Franklin, Grafton, Kettle, Moraine, just to name a few. They have to go there to train because there are no adequate facilities close to home. So let me be clear, we're very much thrilled to see such a forward-thinking proposal for improving clutch park. What we're asking for though is that first, that we protect what already exists in the park for the beginning of mountain bikers, the River Glen Trail. And please don't allow pedestrian path to cut right through it, as you suggested. Uh, you're already aware of that and you wouldn't want to put a walkway through the middle of home plate on the baseball diamond. So let's not do that to, to the trail that already exists. We also want to build a lasting partnership between the City Glendale, Milwaukee County Parks and Milwaukee Metro Mountain Biking Community. We would like you to consider working with us to earmark some of those funds towards establishing the area's only mountain bike park. Something that is already, something that already exists in many communities around the state. Our riders are hungry. They want the opportunity to improve their skills, enjoy their sport without having to drive hours to a bike park in another county. This is an opportunity to build more multi-use trains, trails as well, which will be open to all types of riders from experienced mountain bikers to those on the old school ten speeds. We expect that such an amenity would result in thousands of hours of use in the first year alone, without any need for a formal public relations campaign. So again, we realize your consultants have already made some progressive suggestions regarding how to allocate the city's ARPA funds. Uh, you know, at least one of those ideas already exists in a neighboring park. A bike park with improved trails and a pump track will be, again, the only one in the area. We have the riders, we have the commitment, Milwaukee Metro Mountain Bikers has the know-how. And Glendale with Milwaukee County Parks has the space and the funds. So let's make a lasting impression with this opportunity and leave a legacy for decades to come. So I encourage you to speak with any of our riders, coaches or parents, any of these kids in, in their riding shirts back here. And you'll get an idea quickly of the quality of the people involved in NICA and the mission they're committed to. I'm sure you'll be impressed. So thanks for hearing me out and for caring so much about our kids and our community. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is Nathan Allen. You forwarded that into here, right? Who forwarded that to me? Uh, next is Janine Pufal.
So my name is Janine Pufal, I live at nine ten East Kelly Met Road, that's in Fox Point, but my daughter is a junior at Nicolay. And so um, my husband and I have been coaching um, mountain biking for seven, eight years, something like that. And um, putting a lot of time and energy into it, not because I love mountain biking, but I've, I do, but I love the kids and I love the program and its inclusivity. And Nicolay High School has an amazing um, and very popular class called Outdoor Pursuits. And um, and part of that course is mountain biking, which is really, really exciting that that's happening in a school where we've been working so hard outside the school to grow the sport. And the beauty about Nicolay is the diversity. And this class, if you've seen it, is so diverse and with girls, boys and, and kids of all colors. And this is the only place for them to go to River Glen. And I don't want them to lose that opportunity. And it's a great time for you all to do the right thing and, and make it bigger and more exciting and help these kids get on bikes. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. And then the last person I heard from, and I don't know if he indicated he wanted to speak, but I do see him on the Zoom. Mr. Swanson, did you want to speak to this issue? You can unmute and state your name and address, please.
Hold on.
We can hear you, go ahead.
Okay. My name is Brian Swanson, eighteen twenty West Wayside Drive. As others have noted, this is actually an excellent resource, this trail that is kind of hidden back inside the woods. I have found this to be a very um, therapeutic area to recreate in and do hope to see this uh, trail be retained and not be paved over in any way, shape or form. I realize these are very preliminary. trail be retained and not be paved over in any way, shape, or form. I realize these are very preliminary plans and do hope that the trail is retained and potentially improved as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, so those, those are the folks that I had heard from. It actually was Alderman Bailey who forwarded me Nathan Allen, but okay, so that's, and none of you had anybody else want, wanted to speak to this item? Okay, so now open up to the members of the council. Thoughts from members of the council? Alderman Gellhard, go ahead.
I just want to clarify, the, the people that have spoken today, is the idea that you're, you're interested in creating some type of bike path? Is that it? Because it, this was not one of the suggestions that was in the agenda from the city today. So I just want to make sure that I understand what you're asking for is.
There's an existing bike path, a, a small one between Green Tree and Good Hope Road that for mountain bikers through the little wooded area east of Milwaukee River Parkway. I know that was, part of it was wanting to maintain that. I don't know if folks here are interested in us expanding as well into other parts of the park. I'm seeing a lot of nodding. So yes, I think that's the answer to your question is, could, could we look at as part of these funds, expanding mountain bike access in, in Clutch Park? That, that would involve a, a more in-depth conversation with Milwaukee County Parks, but.
Right, and there's a great group called Milwaukee Metro Mountain Bikers, and we have all been hoping for a pump track somewhere in the city of our county in Milwaukee, and if it could happen here, it would be amazing because of all the, like, sorry, like Mark said, Clutch serves so many mountain bike teams right now. And, and, and not just for the teams, but like adults love mountain biking. When we're out practicing, we see other adults like you know, practicing on the little course that we have. So yes, we are looking, hoping for an expansion. We're hoping you'll start to reach out to the community and what what the community is looking for and needs.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Did you have anything else, Alderman Gellhard? Okay, Alderman Doherty?
Want to know what was a pump track? I'm not sure I understood. Go ahead, come back up. Tell us, tell us more about it. Want to make sure I know.
You will have to YouTube it to see like the full, but pump tracks, they're generally paved and provide opportunities like, you know, undulation and berms. They're not jumps. There's nothing like that would be frightening or dangerous, but it just gives a sort of a you can, in a condensed area, practice a lot of different skills, and they're really fun. And other communities in Green Bay have worked with, I think, with Wisconsin Bike Fed to build, to build pump tracks. There's lots of opportunities. You know, Trek is very involved in getting more kids on bikes. And we'd love to see something close by and being so close to the Oakleaf Trail. It's just an amazing opportunity.
I believe it's like a skateboard park for a mountain.
I'll do, I'll do more homework on that.
Yes, YouTube.
Yeah, I just Googled it.
Okay, did you have any other comments? Okay, Alderman Schmelzing or Alderman Shaw?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
On this specific topic, I think also what I heard, just to kind of paraphrase back, the, the concern also is in the original, very, very preliminary, high level, like new park design, there was like talk of an access path and like a river, to the river. So I think the concern was if that might impact anything that's already there, they want to make sure that doesn't happen. So but, but on my, moving on to just my other general comments on this, I, I feel like I've stated this before, I'll state it again. If we're looking to whittle down this list, I, I think that there's certain things that this money is intended for, and that's to improve the community because of the time that's been lost. So I would, I would probably look to not invest it in, you know, water main replacements or things that typically would be invested in over long-term capital budgeting and not something specific as a net new or net value add. You know, as much as my son would love a skate park, that's probably on the fringe of this. I'm not using it. Already broke my leg once. So but, but all.
Tried to build your own skate park in your yard.
Yeah, yeah, so. And I just, it was actually rollerblades that I crashed on, so. But, but I think generally speaking, I think there's a definite need for bike and pedestrian improvements, and I think there's also a definite need for some kind of net addition to parks. So if I were to go ahead with this, I would try to carve out those two items and say, let's focus in on those two. And then leave the, the water main replacements and, and things like that off the table. So does that mean we build a skate park? Probably not. I think there might actually be better use for like bike improvements with the park in the Clutch Park area. Would we, you know, do some kind of dog park? I think there's a lot of things that we'd have to jump over. No pun intended, but maybe a little bit to, to make that happen, such as DNR and potentially EPA sort of things back in the Fox Point property. So maybe it's not the right time to do that with this if we have to earmark it very quickly. But again, I just think we should focus on net improvements here. And that's, I'll, I'll just leave it there at this point.
Thank you. Alderman Shaw, any input? So I actually, somebody mentioned it'd be nice to get public input on this. We're already scheduling a couple of public hearings for a month from now, in which if it's like the Plan Commission, nobody will show up for those. Why don't we just make it a public hearing night a month from now? So could we get a motion from a member of the council that we scheduled, direct staff to schedule a public listening session to get input from the public about how they'd like to see the one point five million in ARPA funds spent?
Moved.
Second.
Of Alderman Shaw, second of Alderman Doherty. Go ahead, Jim.
And I think I, we had a push at one point. We weren't sure we'd have to move the money quicker or we'd be lost. I have since changed. At that point, I thought the water stuff because it was clearly in the rule and would qualify. Given that we have more time now, I think Steve's talk about biking, talking about pedestrian access. It's something we, it's a wonderful opportunity for us to get some things done that we couldn't otherwise. So I, I'm hoping we had that direction also. Thank you.
Alderman Gellhard? Yeah, I, I guess I echo Alderman Schmelzing's comments as well. The three baseball parks that are behind City Hall were paid for as a result of some type of federal program, I think back in the seventies, where we received a bunch of money to develop the community, and now these are permanent additions that the community gets to enjoy. And I think our focus should be on that with this money. It's, it's, you know, probably a once in a lifetime thing here. So I echo that sentiment that we should take a look at some of those projects and, and direct the money that way.
Any other comments?
So I'll just add, just to explain to folks in the audience, we held a special meeting a few months ago when the whole debt ceiling negotiations were taking place. We heard from our Congresswoman that in the bill, there was going to be a clawback provision for any unallocated ARPA funds. So we held a special meeting and allocated our one point five million dollars to water main replacement, so we didn't lose the money. Now it ended up that provision in the final bill ended up not being in the bill. So now we have the ability to take that money and reallocate it. So I think the public hearing in a month, you know, we'll do a public listening session on the same night as the public hearings and be able to just open the floor to anybody that wants to speak and offer ideas for how we should spend that money. We have time. We have to, we have to have this to you by, by the end of the year, I think, right?
We actually have till December of twenty twenty-four. Staff was trying to be a little aggressive to try to get an answer as early as possible because of design and anything else that we haven't started yet. So we do have time into twenty twenty-four to make this decision if necessary. So I think probably taking our time, listen to the public, and then making a slower decision probably is the better route.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, we do have a motion then to call for a public listening session one month or meeting on the first meeting in September. So all those in favor of the motion to schedule a public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Next, item five F is adoption of the five-year capital improvement plan.
Thank you, Mayor Kennedy. I'll be brief on this description. At a previous city council meeting, the, the council discussed in depth the CIP plan, mainly focusing on the list of alleys to be improved. I'll give a lot of credit here to Public Works Director Imig, who spent a lot of time driving through the city, evaluating all the alleys and putting together a really long-range plan on alley reconstruction, which you will see in the capital improvement plan on page four below road resurfacing. We did alter the plan a little bit from what was originally presented. We went back in time and realized that as a result of the I forty-three project, some alleys were said they were done, but they never were completed. So they were removed from the list, and now they have been back on here, and those are in the five-year plan. So that is the the main and primary change to the, the CIP plan. You know, the biggest item in here, I can tell you, will be discussed at, at the next meeting. We're just going to have an informal review of the Silver Spring Project. Right now pegged at about eleven million dollars in improvements. So being a big project that it is, we do have a four million dollar earmark to that. Three million is the responsibility of the city of Milwaukee, and there's some other grant opportunities that we'll discuss funding in the, in the next meeting on the twenty-eighth, when Engineer Mustafa is back available to us. So this is the capital improvement plan, very similar to what was presented. But again, a lot of effort to Director Imig on went through the alleys and then really prioritizing that based on your guys' discussion. So looking for any feedback on the five-year plan?
Open up first for comments and questions from members of the council. Go ahead, Alderman Schmelzing.
Just to clarify, so these kind of were weighed in the same fashion that our streets were then, kind of as like the quality of them and.
Yeah, the streets, there's a specific measure that the state uses for how engineers have to evaluate and rate the streets. Alleys don't have that.
Right.
It was mainly, and correct me if I'm wrong, Charlie, if you want to come up here and speak to that, he did it on just the look of his eye and how it looked, driving and how it felt driving down the street of evaluating how these alleys were prioritized. I know the first two on here for twenty twenty-four near Rock Place in, in Spreckerville are in really bad shape, particularly with the construction of I forty-three. And I know West Dot uses the one closest to I forty-three as an access, and they're redoing the access point to that once the, the project is completed. So I don't know if you want to expand on your evaluation.
I think you hit it pretty well. It was some of the Pazer rating, which is the road rating as well as visual.
Thank you.
They're cracked and they've got weeds growing up between them. It's probably a good time to replace those.
It's, it's, it's up there and standing water.
Yeah, that's standing water too, yep. All right, any other questions or comments on the capital improvement plan? I know we went through this last meeting or last month.
Thanks for the extra efforts.
All right, well, can I get a motion then to approve the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-eight capital improvement program plan as recommended by staff?
Moved.
Move Alderman Gellhard is her second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Schmelzing. Any further discussion? All those in favor approving, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? The capital improvement plan is approved. Next is an ordinance repealing section two point four point five Music in the Glen Committee and amending section two point four point fourteen Glendale Days Committee and creating a new citywide and Mazlofsky Park Activities Committee. So just give a little history. Music in the Glen was started a couple decades ago. We had a trailer in a field across the street at Parkway.
Thirty decades.
Yeah, a long time ago. And we had a committee that was formed to raise money and book acts that did a weekly concert on that trailer. And eventually the trailer became dilapidated and unusable. We moved it to Nicolay High School for a few years and hosted them inside during the summer while we got the idea together to build Mazlofsky Park. But now Mazlofsky Park has a ton more programming. We're offering movie nights. We're offering music on other nights. We're doing root beer bash. We're doing a whole bunch of other activities at the park. And so it, it seemed as if Glendale Day or Music in the Glen Committee was really sort of a relic we've carried over and really could be incorporated into a lot more city planning. Their Glendale Days Committee plans the Fourth of July. The Fourth of July, Music in the Glen, a lot of these things now involve actually a lot of staff on the committees as well, because we need the staff to be able to coordinate police presence, and if the public works have to close streets or a whole bunch of different things. So thought it would be easier to just have a new committee, a citywide and Mazlofsky Park Activities Committee that would work through the fall and the winter to plan all the activities for the upcoming year. Bring them to the council. We approve them in like, say, February or so, and then they can start booking everything for, for the upcoming year. And everything is coordinated at that point. Then we know what the Wednesday night concerts are going to be, what the weekend concerts are going to be, what movies are going to play, all the different activities we're going to have are, are coordinated by one committee. The composition of that committee then would include the city administrator, at least two staff appointed by the city administrator, which I would assume is probably the Parks Director and one other person, an officer appointed by the chief, and then a number of members of the public and one member of the common council, at least one member of the common council. So so that's before us tonight. Carl, did you want to add anything more to that?
Uh, no, I think that's great. There's a number of terms in here that just indicate how the, the committee will be structured, running under Robert's Rules of Orders. Posed as a committee to make these decisions and determinations for a budget to present to the city council to approve the budget. And also in there is the committee should develop a list of goals, which are then included as part of the mission statement on the city's website and any documents that guide the committee.
All right, thank you. Open up to members of the council. Want to speak? Alderman Doherty?
And before we go further, I just really like to thank Joanne for tirelessly putting in, I don't know how many years on Music in the Glen and just helping make that happen. So.
Don't forget Fourth of July, Glendale Day, the Fourth of July.
I'll get to Mr. Schmelzing too.
So she was on Glendale Days.
I was, I was part of Glendale Days.
I missed part of that decade. I'm sorry.
Yes, you did. It was fifteen years. Nicolay didn't miss it. I worked there too.
Thank you for all the work on, on Music in the Glen and all you've done on that. Really appreciated.
She can still do a lot of it as well, because there's a person who's on the council who can be nominated. But anyways, I, I think this is, this is great synergy to, to do because we've, we've had, you know, we had, we always have bands at the Fourth of July. We always have bands at Music in the Glen. We have food trucks, we have sponsors, we have all those same sort of things across all these events. And, and I think if we can get a good group of community members and, and a cohesive group of volunteers that can continue on year after year and not try to split that across so many different committees, that could be really beneficial. So I, I think this is a great step. I think that it'll be very successful this way. And I'd also like to thank Alderman Shaw for all of her years doing the Fourth of July work, because I know what it's like. So so thank you.
And that's when it was four days.
She always makes us remember that for sure.
Yes, I do, and at the carnival and the.
So anyhow, I'm, I'm in support of this. I think this is a great step to add some synergies and also have the staff support needed.
And this year, honestly, we had still a Fourth of July Committee and a Music in the Glen Committee. We're trying to have city activities that are going on, that the park director was helping to organize with the city administrator, and we had Welcome to Glendale with the North Shore Chamber selling sponsorships and the booklets. And, and it was like, there were too many committees. It just, it got to be really unwieldy, and this is a way of sort of streamlining all of that and bringing it all together. So. All right, any other comments? Alderman Shaw?
First of all, with regards to the ordinance, the name of the park is at Richard E. Mazlofsky Community Park, and it should be listed as that because it's a legal document. So there's several spots that it should be done. And then I'm trying to understand the reasoning have, having a representative from the North Shore Chamber of Commerce, because actually we really work with Welcome to Glendale because there's more of the advertising arm.
Actually, Welcome to Glendale is tasked only with, their, their role is to work with the hotels to put heads in beds. So the events that they sponsor are ones that they can partner with hotels. The North Shore Chamber is actually who we executed in agreement with this year to get all the sponsorships because they have hundreds of businesses that are members. And so that's why the representative, and actually it's the same executive director.
In this particular instance, yes, but hopefully once they expand big time.
Yeah.
They may branch off somehow, but still under the same umbrella. Because I know when Welcome with Glendale, again, it's advertising with regards to getting people into the city. And retrospectively, that's also advertising. Hopefully they'll spend the nights here for heads in beds.
Okay.
That's the reasoning was when, when we originally pulled Welcome to Glendale back into it. And also you're saying Fourth of July, and because I've been over to England and I tease them all, my friends all the time about us leaving England, us as in the U.S. It really should be including the Independence Day celebration, not just Fourth of July, because every country has a Fourth of July, but we have our Independence Day on that particular date. And then with regards to Robert's Rules of Order, if you could put in there the current edition of Robert's Rules of Robert's Rules of Order newly revised due to the fact I am a former parliamentarian from the National Association of Parliamentarians. And I got into that when, former position of mine in a public education. And then also there's a spelling error on item. Well, under J.
Yeah, it's supposed to be part, not art.
I had a feeling. And then every, both times that I've been on the committees with regards to Glendale Days and Music in the Glen, the budget goals usually came from the finance officer from the city, because that's what it was always assigned from all the city administrators I've worked under or worked with, because I guess we point to us instead of the other way around. So those are some changes I would highly recommend before we execute some of this or make sure it's done before it's signed.
So three of them that you've made, I believe we can consider to be grammatical or.
Housekeeping.
Housekeeping, right. So references to Mazlowski Park being Richard E. Mazlowski Community Park. Including the P at the beginning of art, so that it's part of the annual budget process in J. And then the reference to Robert's Rules of Order, the latest version of Robert's Rules of Order newly revised. Those would all be housekeeping.
Current edition, yeah, because that's how it should be reflected.
Oh, the current Robert Rules of Order?
The current edition of Robert's Rules of Order.
Not referencing of issue.
Right.
Current one would always supply.
Yes.
I agree.
That is correct. That way, when it is revised every 10 years, you're.
So Madam Clerk, did you get those changes? Okay. So those would all be housekeeping.
Ultimately, yes.
Okay. So can we, can we get a motion then to approve the ordinance with those minor housekeeping changes?
Move Alderman Schmelzling, second of Alderman Doherty. Okay. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of approving the new ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Host, motion carries.
And our final item of new business, five H is an ordinance amending section 10.1.13B Schedule C, stops at crosswalks through streets to include stop signs at the intersection of West Clovernook Lane and North Bittersweet Lane and amending section 10.1.26 Schedule J, parking prohibited, to prohibit parking on the south side of Daphne from North Elm Tree to North Green and North G. Nicolay Road, and to prohibit parking on both sides of North Sunny Point Road from West Glen River Road to West Fairfield Court. So it's a number of different changes, but all within the same section of ordinances. So they're all kind of lumped in together here. Turn it over to staff for any comments before.
Can I have your further comments? The first two of these were discussed and tentatively approved, the cost form previously for the, the change in parking on Daphne. The post's already in. We have the signs in stock. So it's just a matter of taking out the old signs and putting the new ones on once the ordinance is published and okay to move forward with.
Okay, thank you. Did have three people asking to speak tonight, so I guess we'll call Bethany and Aspen back up. Assuming you tag teamed the first time, you'll tag team this time. Mr. Hoffman, are you going to join them too? All right. That's right.
Y'all live near each other.
Before we know it, everybody on Daphne Road will be. All right. So I know we've already heard from Bethany and Aspen, but Jamin, could you just say your name and your address, please, for the clerk?
My name is Jamin Hoffman. That's J.A.M.I.N. Hoffman. I live at 611 West Daphne Road.
Thank you. Okay, we'll turn it back over to whoever wants to go first.
I just, I wanted to say we strongly urge you to go ahead and put the stops. There's no parking on both sides of Daphne all the way up and down. I know the changes are supposed to be temporary, what's going right now, but I'm really worried once the soccer field opens that this is going to continue to be a problem. It's already a problem during the regular school year on Saturdays when the rec department activities happen out on the fields. So it's, 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 it can really get to be dangerous. And just, just today, and admittedly today's a little weird because of the rain. I was almost hit while walking my dog three times by people trying to do quick U-turns in the intersection of Daphne and Elm Tree and not really looking and seeing what's going on. So the last one was this afternoon. There was a woman talking on her cell phone. She didn't stop at the stop sign. She just swung around and almost ran into both of us. So it was, it's a difficult situation and very unsafe the way it is right now.
Thank you.
Okay. You're in favor of the proposed ordinance change, no parking along the south side of Daphne between Elm Tree Road and G. Nicolay Road. Reasons we approve of this. We will keep the road open for traffic and specifically emergency vehicles that may need to use Daphne Road. When vehicles are parked on both sides, there's a narrow, very narrow opening for two directions of traffic to try and pass between. At times, the north side of Daphne is parked vehicle to vehicle from Elm Tree to G. Nicolay. Vehicles will not be able to park on residential grass. And it will allow for more visibility of the intersection of North Elm Tree Road and Daphne Road. And as neighbors back out of their driveway, that stop sign intersection tends to be a stop if you really feel like it that day. So stop sign and making way around the, providing more visibility is, would be super helpful.
We're also in favor as it will allow more space for any pedestrians and bikers that are using Daphne. There are many students. There are families. Just on our way here tonight, there was a family with three young children walking to their car that was parked on this, the south side of Daphne. And there are also vehicles trying to pass them in both directions. So there actually were cars parked all the way on the north side from G. Nicolay down to Elm Tree, as well as about three quarters of the way from Elm Tree to G. Nicolay on the south side. So both sides this evening were almost completely full side to side. And it was very difficult for vehicles to get through as well as pedestrians, families, students, families trying to make their way through as well. I did take some photos actually and took a few videos. I did send them to John. So if Alderman Gellhart would like to share with the rest of the common council, he can. So you can see what, what this is looking like every day on a daily basis. There's also, we've noticed that the fire hydrants are all posted along the south side of Daphne as well. So keeping that clear and open would really allow for if a fire truck does need to come in, it can easily access without having cars being parked possibly like close to a fire hydrant. Many neighbors also have yard poles along the street in their grass. And there are vehicles that are just not even considering the poles, driving them over, driving over signs, parking on the grass. We've seen vehicles park halfway onto the grass, halfway onto the road. And there's not a lot of respect from drivers to follow, kind of what neighbors have just kindly tried to do to keep people off of their grass. But yeah, but please take a look if you'd like for John to share those photos and videos with you. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did forward one of the photos when I had asked for this to be put on the agenda for city staff to see with, you know, cars parked on both sides of Daphne and that was basically making it a one-lane road, which of course, should there be an emergency, would be, you know, a real problem. And so I'm obviously in favor of this and have brought it forward for consideration tonight.
Alderman Schmelzling?
On, on the specific road there with Daphne, like I read in the ordinance, this would only put the no parking on the south side. So, but there's still a lot of like drop off and pickup. I, I have a son who goes Nicolay. Yeah, go ahead.
The, the signs on the north side of the street are kind of ambiguous. Says no parking during school days from 7:30 to 4:30. What's really a school day? You know, not also not during athletic events. I mean, if there's a lot of stuff going to the rec department, does that count as athletic events? You know, so it's, I, I'd like for it to be very unambiguous, just no parking, because it's, it's dangerous. And especially, and I hate to point out any particular group, especially with Dr. Kabara, my boss behind me here. But the young men in the football team tend to be more aggressive drivers than some of the ones you had recently. And they've been parking all up and down there. I saw a young man attempting to parallel park in a space that was way too small. So he ended up parking head in on the grass with his tail sticking out in the road. And then they turn around, do a U-turn and zip out of the neighborhood really fast. And I mean, I know it's not part of the, this particular thing, but if we could even have a no U-turn policy, that would be wonderful too, because they can just drive around the block. It works.
Yeah, I see this as an improvement, but I just was kind of highlighting that, you know, there's still, there could still be standing cars as people are, are loading and unloading, so to say. But yeah, just highlighted that fact. So. And then moving on to the one other thing. You, you heard me earlier about the feedback I've gotten on, on some stop signs in my district. I, I still feel that, and we talked briefly about this in the last meeting, that it would be best to have on that other corner. I have it up on Google right now. So on, actually too many tabs up. I'll go back to my notes. Specifically on Clovernook. I, I think it makes sense to have a stop sign there at the T, but I, I feel like if there's one on Bittersweet, people will just go through it and that could be risky as well. So I, I don't know if that could be something that we further consider is, is just putting it on Clovernook so that everybody knows they have to stop at the T. And, and if we do move ahead with one on Bittersweet, we, we really should put a stop ahead sign around that corner, because otherwise people are going to come around that corner and not realize there's a stop sign right there. So if you've never driven that route before. So those are my only two comments on these. Thank you.
Alderman Doherty, go ahead.
Take up anything with the wording on those other signs right now, right?
It's just the ordinance as it is presented right now, but yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments from members of the council? And can we get a motion then to approve the ordinance?
I'll move.
Move Alderman Gellhard.
Second.
Second of Alderman Doherty. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. Next are Commission Committee, Board and Staff Reports. I'll start with the chief.
We had a very successful national night out on August, please, second. All North Shore agencies were at Parkway School and it turned out to be very well, and we hope to have it again there next year. Thank you.
Pictures look really nice.
Excuse me?
The pictures look really nice.
Yes, it was a good, it was a good turnout. Well, and we didn't get the helicopter. They couldn't, they couldn't make it that day. So.
Photographer was the one who made the comments.
There's a lot of photographers there, but yes, that was a good one.
But obviously Lieutenant Todd hasn't gotten back to of all the ones he's received. He's on vacation.
He's on vacation. So it might be a couple of days before he gets back to him.
All right, Clerk? Nothing? Okay. City Administrator?
Uh, nothing more tonight. Thank you.
All right. City Attorney?
Uh, just following some passage of the, there we go. Just following the passage of the new liquor law bill that's passed this, the assembly is now in front of the Senate, which may have some impact on regulation here. There's a big overhaul of that everything. Could affect the amount of, of types of, and types of licenses we have and who we can issue them to. So I anticipate that to be coming this fall, by this fall.
Thank you. Alderman Doherty?
Nothing to report tonight.
Alderman Gellhard?
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Schmelzling?
Nothing here.
Alderwoman Shaw?
Music in the Glen has wrapped up their season. Their reigning date was the kids' concert, and that was actually a very popular concert compared to some of the concerts we've had this year. And I know a number of the kids are asking if he can come back again next year. He's from Green Bay. He said he had a great time. And normally we don't repeat concerts one year after the other. So, but it's one for the books where we can say, yes, that was a good kids' concert. So other than that, we're just trying to figure out a wrap-up meeting date to, so all the members can attend.
All right. Thank you. We had a successful car show on Saturday at Mazowski Park. And also the Fire Department Board met last week. If you remember my report last month, the Fire Department Board had, there'd been a proposal from the Fire Department that we allocate roughly one-third of the increase in shared revenue that we're supposed to start getting, starting in 2024, to the Fire Department. And it was met. We'll just say all seven communities were pretty much unanimous that we're not all going to commit to giving a third of our increased shared revenue, but we'll work with them on a capital plan. So we're working on them to develop a capital schedule for when they have to replace fire trucks and, and ambulances. And so that, that will come back to us for approval later this fall. But we were, we were reluctant to commit to giving a third of the additional $380,000 that we're supposed to get every year to the Fire Department. But like I said, with a plan in place, we'll commit whatever resources they need for the Fire Department. I also made the comment at that meeting that there's times that we get promised things by the state and then when the check comes, it's not for the amount we thought it was going to be. So if we think we're getting additional $380,000 sometime in the middle of 2024, when the next fiscal year starts, that doesn't mean that that's actually what we're going to get next year. So we're really reluctant to commit when, until we, well, there's one thing of the checks in the mail. There's another one, the check actually came and got deposited at the bank and you know it cleared. So I don't want to trust that the state's going to give us what they say they're going to give us until it actually comes in. So that concludes my report. Our next meeting is in two weeks on the 28th, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
I'll move.
Move Alderman Doherty?
Second.
Second of Alderman Schmelzling. All those in favor of adjourning, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? We are adjourned.